Alrighty. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Rainbow Democrats Candidate Speakers Forum for the candidates for Orange County School Board District 5. This evening, we're going to be hearing from Representative Bruce Anton, Vicki Elaine Felder, and Mike Scott, who are the candidates for District 5. If anybody has any questions that they are looking to ask the candidates, please be sure to use the Q&amp;A feature that's located at the bottom part of the Zoom feature. Without further ado, I am going to allow each of the candidates a minute to two minutes to actually give a opening statement and introduce themselves, so that way, Orange County voters can find out more about their intent for school board. I'm going to go ahead and hand that now over to Representative Bruce Anton.
Alright, good evening. I'm State Representative Bruce Anton, and thank you for inviting me to be a part of tonight's forum. Look, I'm a candidate for Orange County Public Schools District 5 because, folks, I am committed to education. I have a proven, long track record of a conference when it comes to education. During my time in legislature, I probably secured over $200 million in funding for education projects, whether it's universities, elementary state college, the University of Central Florida, Orange County Public Schools, Emmett High School, Community School, what have you. I have a proven track record of getting things done. And again, I am committed to education and public education. So my background is, I came to Orlando in 1984. I worked for a little small company called IBM. I sold technology, mainframes, artificial intelligence, laptops, what have you. I've worked in the nonprofit industry. I've worked in the small business area. I was a Director of Education Programs at a small state government agency over in Titusville, Florida. It's Technological Research and Development Authority, where I managed $5 million in grants and partnerships with universities that taught teachers how to use technology to teach math and science. Back in 2003, I co-founded a nonprofit agency that provides residential care for foster kids. And so, we provided 24-hour day, 306-day-a-year care for over 300 kids. I have 20-plus years in state government. So I'm very experienced, well-aware of how to make policy, how to create budgets, how to work with folks, how to work with multiple parties, how to get things done, how to build our relationships. Then I'm also a father and a parent, and so I have a 22-year-old daughter that just graduated from Florida State University, getting ready to go off to grad school. But as a parent, I coached her track team, her basketball team, her volleyball team. I was the chaperone for the girls' dance team. So I know kids, I have a relationship with kids, and all I want to do is just make sure that every school in District 5 and Orange County gets whatever resources and funding needs. So that's my opening remark.
Alright, thank you, Representative Anton. Next, we're going to move to Vicki Felder.
Yes, good evening. I am Vicki Elaine Felder, and let me tell you, thank you for the invitation. I just want to share just some thoughts. I have lived in the district for 63 years. I've attended elementary school in the district. I attended middle school, back then it was junior high school in the district, and I graduated from this strong of Jones High School in 1974, and I still yet live in the district. What makes me different from the other candidates is that I come with, now starting on Friday, July 31st, I started my 40th year of teaching public schools in the Orange County School District. I have had to face and interact with students, parents, the communities, you know, respectively. And I bring with that experience an aptitude and a proficiency in skills needed to navigate parental relationships and community relationships with the school board. That is a necessary consensus that's agreeable to all that's involved. And my slogan is that, "An educator, not a politician," because I say, "We don't necessarily need politicians, we need practicality." You can have all the money in the world, all the money that you need, but you need the practicality to implement the funds in the right way. I am excited about running for this position because I believe that there is a need for community and communication between the school board, the school, and the parents. I am a teacher. I know exactly what teachers need. I know the kinds of things that they are going through, and I also understand the children, the students, and I have been, it's been communicated to me, some fear that parents have about starting school. We start school Monday. Children start school Monday. You have to be prepared, and I am prepared to work with students because I'm starting at the beginning with them. So I would encourage people to look at the credentials of all of us that are running for this position and make the best choice. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Vicki. And finally, Mr. Mike Scott.
Good evening, everybody, and thanks for having me. My name is Mike Scott. I was born and raised here in Orlando, Florida. I've spent the past 15 years working with youth and their families, advocating for them in the criminal justice system and in the education system. I went to West Orange High School, Gulf Middle School, a bunch of elementary schools, like a lot of folks, and I kind of fell into the work of education and being a counselor. It wasn't anything that I sought out to do. I wanted to join the military, the Air Force, and grow up and be an FBI agent, but circumstance put me in a different direction. I feel like working with these families has been a calling in my life. It doesn't feel like work to me, and I've enjoyed being able to help people set their goals and go from point A to point B, whatever that goal is that they want. I've spent a lot of time advocating for families in IEP hearings to make sure that they had the proper education needs, and also advocating in disciplinary hearings. The school board, as an organization, is reflective of the community. It should have different representations so that it mirrors the people that it represents. Our current school board isn't very reflective of the entire community. We already have three teachers or former teachers on the school board, so we have that perspective. Equally, we have two former elected officials, one former legislature and a former mayor. So we have the perspective of those who have been in other public office to be able to advocate. But we've never had a young person, certainly not a young black man, to be able to provide a different perspective of the kids who are, in my opinion, the most vulnerable. So I hope that when you consider voting for someone, you'll consider voting for me. This is my life. I've dedicated my life to this, and like I said, it doesn't feel like work. It's very important to me, so thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and get into the question portion of the forum. First question, and this is going to go to Representative Anton. Would you support a zero-tolerance policy against discriminating and bullying LGBTQ students?
Yes, I would certainly support a zero-tolerance policy for discrimination against LGBTQ students, and also supported the, I can't even think of the name of the scholarships that we passed in Tallahassee dealing with bullying. So anytime a kid was bullied, reported that to the principal, went through the proper channels, they could receive a scholarship to go to a private school, a Christian school, another charter school, another public school, what have you. But I would definitely support a zero-tolerance policy.
Okay. Thank you, Representative. Mike, same question.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. Would you support a zero-tolerance policy against discriminating and bullying LGBTQ students?
I absolutely would support that. I think that's important that you advocate for persons regardless of where they're from, what their beliefs are. I don't think I would, I wouldn't, I'm not going to give a kid money to run away. I think that it's important, as a school board, that we educate our staff and our students about what differences are and also how to respect those differences. So for me, I absolutely support a zero-tolerance policy.
Perfect, thank you. And Vicki?
Yes, we have a zero-tolerance already in place in Orange County Public Schools. Teaching in the school system these past, well, 40 years now, we've always had a zero-tolerance for the, I guess, maybe the last 15 or 20 years, because it's important that children need to feel comfortable in their own skin, and that is the mandate. That's what I use when I teach students, because I've taught students from all walks of life and have dealt with parents. From all, yes, I would support a zero-tolerance, just as though I would support a zero-tolerance of racial discrimination, I would support a zero-tolerance of the LGBT community. We have a club at Edgewater, and many of the high schools in Orange County, they do have those clubs. So yes, of course, I would.
Okay, great, thank you. Next question. In Virginia, a transgender student was denied access to a bathroom that aligned with his gender identity per school board policy. If elected, how would you address this issue? In other words, should Orange County Public Schools have a blanket policy? And what that policy would be if so? Or should it be on a person-by-person basis? I'm going to have Mike answer that question first.
Before I answer, can you repeat that question? I broke it up, and I wasn't, I wanted to try to understand what you're asking before I answer. If you wouldn't mind repeating that again, because that was a long, very long question, so.
Oh, yes, sure, I apologize. In Virginia, a transgender student was denied access to a bathroom that aligned with his gender identity per school board policy. If elected, how would you address this issue?
Okay. It really comes down to education. I think that we have to first educate our staff, and it goes back to what I told you guys earlier about the school board being reflective of the community. The school board in its own area is reflective of everyone in every community, regardless of whether they interact on purpose or just passing in the street. And I think it starts with, again, educating our staff. Some people don't even know the difference between gender identity and sexual orientation, and sometimes think it's one and the same, and it's not. So for me, I think it's important that we educate our staff and make sure that they make informed decisions as it relates to the policies that they apply, because you really have to understand the people that you serve in order to make policies or rules that are, or they're going to represent them. So for me, the biggest thing is teaching them what it means to be trans, you know, what the difference is between your, I identify as a man or a woman, and as a man or a woman, I like women or I like men. So for me, it really just comes down to education and teaching the staff and making sure that the staff and the people that make the decisions are informed of what they're making decisions about, and more importantly, how those decisions will impact the people that they apply them to.
Okay, great, thank you. Vicki, same question.
Okay, as a member of the school board, I am sure that if those, and they have come up, that whichever policy the school board has adapted, and it needs to be based on the wishes of the members of the constituency that I represent, because I have said that I will be the voice of those that I represent. And if the voice of those I represent, if they have some concern regarding transgender and bathroom, and if the school board on a whole majority votes for the tolerance level being, if a person's gender has changed, that they should be able to use the bathroom of their gender, then I'll support that, because as a school board member, it is not my desire to be totally opposite about the rights of people. However, my purpose, and it will always be my purpose, is to speak and be the voice of those members of my constituency. And that would be something that I would need to talk with them about, but being a school teacher for as long as I have, those have been some very important concerns, because a lot of students who have, and I've talked to students that are transgender, they have, some of them have gone through some very ugly experiences that we have not agreed with, and as a district. So my answer to that would be, of course, to represent as best I can the wishes of the members of my constituency, and whatever their wishes are, because I told them I want to represent them, and whatever they have decided, that is what I would try my best to communicate to the board to let them know of my position. I hope I've answered that for you clearly.
Yes, thank you. And Bruce?
So my answer is going to be this. What I would like to do is to, of course, with the LGBT community, seek input from the LGBT community, the students, the parents, administrators, and figure out what's the best solution. And so, we've got to make sure that everybody's comfortable, all the students, with whatever decision the board passes down. And so, first thing I'm going to do is just seek input and see which direction we go in and what's the best direction. And I hope this is not the wrong answer, but you know, in the past, we've made accommodations for families with family restrooms. You know, we've increased the number of toilet outlets in ladies bathrooms, so that we have what we call "potty-potty," potty for some, "potty pair." But again, I just think we need to split, work with students, parents, administrators, and figure out what's the best solution, which solution makes everybody comfortable, and which solution addresses the LGBT community.
Perfect, thank you. And yes, I do agree that there needs to be some level of input, whether that be a task force or whatnot, because at the day, kids are going to school to learn and obviously to socialize, and the last thing that should be on the minds of the students is worrying about, are they going to be attacked for using, for the restroom that they are identifying for that particular gender? Next question is going to be, this one's going to go to Vicki first. Even with the recent Supreme Court ruling, one of the top concerns as a future educator, and this question, I apologize, as you preface this, this comes from one of our, the members of the, Brooke Wilson. Even, oh, sorry. Even with the recent Supreme Court ruling, one of my top concerns as a future educator is the possibility of getting fired for who I choose to love. Would you work to ensure that doesn't happen to Orange County Public Schools' phenomenal teachers and staff, and if so, how?
That, thank you for that question. Because of my age, I know that many teachers of color were fired when, because they were black or because they stood up against some policies that were instituted in Orange County some 40, 50, 60 years ago. Teacher, black teachers, when they got their paychecks, their paycheck was less than their count of white teachers, and their paychecks were not covered, they were not in envelopes, they were just handed to them. And the late Mrs. Dorothy Butts, who lives in the district, she's now deceased, because she fought and advocated for black teachers to get the same amount of pay and have the privacy of the paycheck, she was blackballed. So she lives down the street from me, and my mother worked with her. It's no way in the world that I would not fight and stand up for a person who was being mistreated because of who they chose to love, because that's between them and the God that they serve. So because I come from this area, and I come out of a generation of segregation, moving to integration, I understand what it means to be discriminated against. And so, that's a part of my mantra, and whatever the discrimination is, I'm like John Lewis, I make good trouble. That's all I'm going to say about that. Thank you.
I love your quote from the late John Lewis, thank you. And Mike Scott, same question.
Please, please repeat the question, because I want to make sure I understand it again.
Yes. Even with the recent Supreme Court ruling, what if my top concerns as a future educator is the possibility of getting fired for who I choose to love? Would you work to ensure that doesn't happen to Orange County Public Schools' phenomenal teachers and staff, and if so, how? And that question comes from one of our members.
Okay, yes, I would work to make sure someone wasn't fired for who they love in terms of sexual orientation. How I would work to do that would be, again, having conversations. I think it's important that, as we develop rules and policies, when you look at it, a lot of it is focused on liability, hey, how can we not be sued? But I think it should be a framework of, how can we serve? How can we be better? So how I would work would be to have a dialogue with those teachers who openly identify as lesbian or gay, and figure out, again, what best serves you. You know, this is the policy we're looking at, but I don't think anyone should be fired because, you know, they love someone and someone else thinks it's wrong for whatever their personal beliefs are. So I would absolutely advocate to make sure that didn't happen and have dialogue with those to make sure that we had things in place, protections in place, so that it wouldn't happen.
Perfect, thank you. And Bruce, same question.
Let me just start by saying this. I don't know what the current policy is for Orange County Public Schools when it comes to that particular issue, but what I would say is that I would be willing to lead the charge, to work with whoever, to make sure that we do have a policy in place to prevent discrimination based on sexual orientation, who you love, your race, your ethnicity, your age, pregnancy, what have you. So again, I would be willing to roll up my sleeves and make sure we put the proper policy or policies in place to prevent that from happening.
Perfect, thank you. We're going to shift focus for just a moment. We're going to ask a question related to COVID-19, since, of course, children will be going back to school next week. This is going to be affecting both the students and, not only just students and parents, but also teachers and staff as well. In your opinion, what can schools do in the COVID-19 era to keep these students safe? First, that question is going to first go to Mike.
Move very slowly, very slowly. I feel like decisions that have been made recently by the board and some of the leadership have been, you know, rushed, and I think that the first thing that we do is move slower. When you move fast, everyone, regardless of experience level or position level, you know, are prone to making mistakes. So that is probably the most important thing, I would say, is to move slowly. And then second, just come up with a checklist. We come up with, you know, our plan on what we want to do, and then after that, we look at, okay, how we're going to do it, and more specifically, who's going to do what? Who's responsible for it? We're going to have this person check temperatures this many hours a day. Are they going to rotate? Where are they going to be stationed? When are they going to have breaks? I think that the process just needs to be discussed a little bit in more detail, so that the parents and everyone feels that, you know, the school board is putting their safety above everything else. Again, like I said, I think the process is worse. My example would be, you look at the school board giving a week, and then they added a few days, but, you know, less than two weeks for parents to make a decision that the school board as an organization didn't make in three, what, almost three, four weeks? In three meetings, almost 10 hours apiece. So my biggest thing when it comes to COVID is just moving slow, asking questions, making sure that you have all the facts that are available to you, and then making a decision that involves the entire community. You can't ask eight people and some senior staff to make a decision that affects, you know, a quarter of a million students without involving all parties, the health department, the other municipalities. I mean, it's not just a school board decision because it impacts all of us. So in summary, just move slower and ask more questions and be inclusive. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Mike. Bruce, same question.
So my answer to that, simply this. We know that COVID-19 is dangerous. It makes folks sick. It kills folks. Right now, there is not much data, much testing data available for school-aged kids. So if I'm on the school board, one of the things I would do is insist that we get the necessary folks together, the Department of Health, administrators, principals, what have you, students, parents, and we make sure that we put the necessary policies and procedures in place. So that would include making sure that the schools are cleaned daily, that they're sanitized, would it be on an hourly basis, what have you, making sure that we had necessary masks, PPEs, what have you, in place. We'll probably need to hire some additional custodians for the schools. We need to figure out a policy and procedure for busing. I mean, when do you determine if you, when do you check a child's temperature? One of the other things I would assist upon is that for whoever decides to go back to school, whether it's a student, the teachers, the principals, employees, I think all of them should be tested before we allow them to come back to school. So we need a starting point somewhere, but we've got to put the necessary policies and procedures in place now. That has to be done. How do you clean? How do you sanitize the school? How do you make sure the PPEs are there? Because kids are not going to come to school with a mask every day, so we've got to have that stuff in place. We've got to spend extra money for cleaning supplies. So my question is, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Coronavirus is dangerous. We need policies and procedures in place to make sure that we deal with that properly, and then everybody needs to be educated on those policies and procedures.
Thank you, Bruce. Vicki, same question.
Yes, thank you. We have policies and procedures already in place. They have been in place since we started, when we went on that sort of academic sabbatical, so to speak, when the children did distant learning. We started our pre-planning on Monday. There have been all kinds of emails and all kinds of professional development that's in place that we can, that teachers have available to them regarding the procedure of cleanliness and of masks. We have all of that as a part of the PPEs. We have all of that. Teachers have been given the opportunity to get and to be that, to be divvied out to them, so they can be able to take children's temperatures if they so choose. We get a stipend for the year, and many teachers have decided, I've already purchased my AsVap outfit, and then I'm going to also purchase a temperature gauge. We have that. The thing that I think that needs to be reinforced is our communication with social services. We do have social workers on campus, but money is the elephant in the room that nobody wants to address. We're going to have to not do, the trajectory of the way we do things must change, and narrative has to change. Instead of having one nurse with, even though we have maybe 40% of students coming back at my school, Edgewater, they may start to come back later on, and one nurse can't do that. So there's going to have to be policy put in place that we engage social services to assist us. We have a foundation, Orange County School Board has a foundation of business people and have the financial resources to help us pay for that. Secondly, we're going to also have to have help in the medical area, because one nurse possibly can't do 9 through 12. So where we are right now, we have that put in place. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go with my time. Well, we do have that in place now, we do, because they come Monday. I mean, when school starts, they don't do Face to Face on the 21st, but school will start Monday, the 10th.
Great, thank you. And actually, along the same lines of what you were talking about with budget and teachers and administrators having to purchase certain supplies, I'm going to ask this question. Many teachers, and this is a known fact, that many teachers have to come out of their own pocket to purchase supplies for their classroom, whether that be, you know, extra pencils or pens or notepads or anything like that. Would there be room in the school board budget to provide for an increase for PPE protection for the students and staff? And that question's going to go first to Bruce.
All right, so let me say this. Through the Federal Cares Act, a lot of money has come down to the cities, the counties, some additional dollars have come down to the school districts, the public schools for PPEs, for coronavirus. What we'd have to do as a school board member is go through the budget, work with the budget administrators at the school board, and figure out where we can find the extra dollars we need for PPEs, cleaning, sanitation in the school, extra custodial staff and stuff like that. One of the other issues we'd have to deal with is, is what happens if a kid comes to school and they're sniffling, they're coughing, what have you. How do we quarantine that kid at school? Because not all parents are going to come get those kids. So what do we do in the meantime? But again, we'd have to find the money in the budget and set aside a specific pot for coronavirus-related issues. That's my answer.
Thank you, Bruce. Mike, same question.
Yeah, absolutely. I work with, you know, the staff to, you know, allocate funds. I think there's always a way to get something accomplished. You just have to figure out what the roadblocks are to getting accomplished and address them. address them. So I know they've set aside a considerable amount of money uh to address uh P P E for uh kids and also for the staff. Even our team, we were buying face shields because we know some kids may not, whether it's medical or just a personal preference, don't want to wear uh, you know, the face mask or getting them a shield. And having those conversations with uh my team. So uh for me, it's just, it's not absolutely, yes, we'll set it aside. And if we can't, we figure out where we can find the money from and reality.
Great. Thank you. And Vicky, same question.
Uh yes, the school board has a capital budget and an operational budget. And of course, perhaps operational budget, then they may need to be there need, there's going to need to be some increase because uh we are going to have a situation uh where children may not wear the mask or they uh they get sick. And uh most principals have already decided and administrators know exactly what their plan is and so do teachers. We've been in pre-planning since July. So we put things in place in terms of what we need to do in the event that a kid goes out to P E and maybe an hour later, the headache comes or the coughing or and they get the temperature and it's higher than and it's it's supposed to be. We put in place what's what is going to happen. That's what we do with teachers. We've done it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um so my next question is still gonna be related to uh covid nineteen. As you may know, or maybe where I was actually a product of Osceola County uh public schools and I was actually uh deeply involved through uh middle school and high school um in a band and concert symphonic and marching band. Now, uh with covid nineteen and uh students and parents having to choose with which way they're going to learn. What obstacles do you think um a lot of the the arts programs are gonna face this year uh for this coming year? Uh Vicky, I'm gonna have that question go to you first.
Well, thank you because I'm an arts person. I was a theater major, Spelman, and I played in the band in high school. Well, I think one of the obstacles is going to be the children are playing the instrument, how they gonna wear a mask. That's something we have to work out. And I I'm, my heart really goes out to the music department and and I was talking to a theater teacher yesterday at school. I said, it's gonna be very difficult to do distant learning when you're teaching an acting skill. Because you need to be able to touch the kids, you need to be able to show them uh what you want them to do and be able to interact with them closely. But we talked about the fact that having sort of a Zoom type of situation, not using Zoom, because we don't use Zoom in Orange County Public Schools. But there's gonna be some type of interaction that we're having where you can talk to the students. And I saw a beautiful rendition of a group of high school students uh around July, the group, the band, they played a uh music. They all were in their own little thing, working and playing the instrument. That is something that I think that band uh masters, theater coaches are gonna have to talk to parents and have a medical professional uh on point to find out, you know, how they can uh maneuver and do this because the arts have to stay in school. They have, the children have to have uh the arts, the visual and performing arts. So again, that's gonna require much conversation. Much conversation. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh Mike, same question.
Can you ask the question again, please?
Yes. Um what obstacles uh do you expect the uh arts programs in the schools uh to face during the the current school year due to covid nineteen?
The obstacles that I face, uh that I expect them to face would really just be practicality. Some of the things you just can't convey uh as Ms. Felder and even Mr. Antonis shared through a computer screen as we're doing now. Um when you talk about like for me, my interest in middle and high school deduction, so learning how to edit uh doing the the afternoon news while TV. Um so I think that it's like what I said earlier, when partnerships come into play. Having uh conversations with the professionals in the in in our community to do those different professions and figuring out how if we can't do it on school property or we can't do it through school time or their facilities aren't adequate enough, how can we bring in the community to be able to accomplish the goal of exposing our kids to the arts? But I absolutely do foresee uh many challenges. And again, that's just, again, being able to retain the knowledge, there's just some things you can't do through a computer screen. Like if I'm trying to get, position yourself to the right, project your voice, stand here, stand there. Uh some of the things are a little bit difficult to do from a distance. So I I do see a lot of challenges. But I think the resolution to those challenges is again involving our community um partners that uh do these things on every day on a professional level um to help us come up with solutions so that, you know, our kids are able to have the exposure that they need in the arts. Thank you.
Thank you. And Representative Anton, same question.
I would say the major challenges are gonna be, how do we get the kids together to practice for a play, for a choir concert, for band concert, for all of that stuff. Um so those are gonna be your major challenges there. But on an individual basis, perhaps we can do some individual instruction using technology to teach kids how to play instruments, uh to coach them on their instruments, to teach them how to play the cello, the trumpet, what have you. We can use technology to do that. It won't be the same as that uh person to person, but we certainly can do that. Um on in terms of drama, which Ms. Feld is a part of, again, we can use the technology to some extent to do some coaching. But it won't be the end of that person to person uh interaction. But what we have to do in the meantime, again, is make sure that uh we keep our kids safe and healthy, that we don't expose them unnecessarily to coronavirus, but we use the technology however we can uh to do what we can. Individual instruction, individual coaching, you know, uh maybe we can do some duets using the technology, what have you. We can do a number of things. It won't be what we've been able to do in the past. But in the meantime, we can do some things and then as time passes, maybe a vaccine comes, maybe it's safer. You know, to have the kids come back together, then we can expand and maybe get back to the the plays, the concerts, to what have you. That's my answer.
Perfect. Thank you. Um so my next question is gonna go, excuse me, my next question is gonna go to Mike. Uh should Orange County Public School teachers and administrators be allowed to incorporate their own religious beliefs into school lessons and policies? If so, how would you ensure that schools remain a welcoming and inclusive environment for all students and teachers?
I think that that's a tough question. So I will tell you that I think that you should be consistent and and definitely keep it separate because there are any number of of different religions that have, some of them established for hundreds and thousands of years and some that are, you know, created every so often. So I think that when you uh incorporate those into policies, you run the risk of offending one or a larger group of people. But it kind of happens organically, like uh just, you know, I'm going to be truthful. I'm not going to tell a lie. I'm going to be respectful. Some things just kind of have it organically based on people's different faiths. But I don't think that they uh should be written into specific policies because what you do for one, you have to do for all. And I think the safest bet is being um a little bit consistent and not allowing uh my religious beliefs to shape, you know, things that I do. Cause if I say, hey, everything should be painted red and then you say everything should be painted purple and then we have a difference. And then someone else says, I want it to be yellow and green. Then you you open yourself up to a lot of issues where people are are fighting. Um so I think um that that should not specifically be included where we're using religious beliefs to inform policies that are gonna affect a large group of people because everybody's religions are different and it's something that's deeply personal. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Bruce, same question.
I would say from a school board um perspective, uh the school board needs to make sure that there are some kind of policies in place, what have you, to make sure that teachers are not incorporating their religious beliefs into their classroom, into the curriculum, what have you. And we just need to reinforce with the teachers that they need to stick with teaching the curriculum. They need to stick with T C A F, science, arts, languages, uh English, what have you, but do not incorporate their particular religious beliefs into the classroom, into the uh into the curriculum. You know, when folks do that, it creates some major controversy. And that takes away from uh the kids learning. And again, we need to make sure that the focus is on the teachers' teaching, what they're supposed to teach and that the teach, and that the students are learning uh whatever they need to learn, art, science, math, English, languages, technology. That's my answer.
Thank you. And Vicky.
Yes, thank you so much for that question. Uh religion is already taught in school, but it is not taught as theology. It is taught as literature and it's taught as history. And I think when you present a lesson, uh you can present the lesson as is, but you're not, you're not supposed to present the lesson as it's something that this is what I believe and this is how you should believe. Cause that's against school board policy. There's a separation of religion and state. So a person that teaches British Lit that I have taught. The twenty-third Psalm is in the book. Uh the story of Genesis is in the book, but I teach it as literature. In eleventh grade, when I teach transcendentalism, it talks about God and belief in finding truth. And our truth uh the presence of truth is in everything. I teach the literature. I don't teach it like this is what I believe, this is what you should believe. But this is the key. And a teacher that's experienced understands the difference. You teach religion as history and literature, not as theology. If you're gonna teach as theology, then you need to go to a school of divinity. But in public school and public education, it should not enter in there as theology. You teach it as literature and history. That gives you an opportunity to teach about Islam, Hinduism, Zen and all of the religions. But you teach it as literature. That's the thing that makes it uh applicable and gives students the kind of education so they can choose. That's what it, that's what a good teacher does. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky.
Okay.
Um and on a similar topic, uh this next question uh first is gonna go to Bruce. Many people throughout the years have said that uh prayer needs to return to schools because uh some schools don't have prayer and they believe that having prayer put back in schools will actually uh make this country a better place. Do you agree with having prayer in schools? And if so, would you open it up to all religions?
My other to that would be to set aside a few minutes each day for each student to to pray uh quietly, privately, what have you. I don't think we should be uh dictating a particular time to have prayer. Of course, folks will say that we should get input from the students and the parents and and decide what the community wants to have prayer in school. I would just say, let's keep it generic. Let's set aside two minutes, five minutes at the beginning of each school day. Uh where the kids can meditate, they can pray. Um but it's saying, I can pray all day when I'm driving in the car, when I'm walking in the grocery store, when I'm sitting in a restaurant. And so we have to encourage kids, hey, if you wanna do a prayer, then you can pray individually. Uh when we try to get into the group prayer thing, and I hope that doesn't sound wrong, then we we get to a point of controversy that sometimes is something we cannot overcome. So again, set aside a few minutes each day for the kids to do whatever they want properly. And we go from there.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Yes. Uh Vicky, same question.
Thank you uh for your question. Prayer has never left the school. Uh people have different religious beliefs and different ways that they pray. And I would assume and and suspect that people are still praying in terms of trying to force someone to pray the way that you pray or the way you have decided is an accepted prayer. I have an issue with that because I'm a teacher, I'm an educator. And what my position and what my job is to present the material and allow my students to make the choice. So um students who were Wicca, those are children that uh whose religious faith uh mirrors witchcraft. I've taught students who are from Islamic faith. I've taught students who are Pentecostal, some are Christian Catholicism. And um I think that our job as educators and our job as a member of the school board should encourage students to make their own decisions. You present a slate, you give them the information and you allow them to make their own decision. If you wanna pray, then that's what you do in the way that you do. That's like communism, making them how to do it the way I wanna do it. This is America. This is a democracy. It's a place of freedom. And that's all I'm gonna say about that. Thank you. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I was having trouble uh unmeaning myself.
You hear my last part? Okay, thanks.
And Mike, uh same question.
And so um to give context, so uh UCF has the Student Union. Um and in the Student Union, you have what they call R S Os or Registered Student Organizations. So uh one of the students in UCF, we have another organizations. And then you have people who want additions. I think that um along the lines of what um you know, Mr. Anton said and even what Mr. said, I think we we allow access. So we set aside, you know, a space where someone can meditate, pray, or hey, you know, every morning at, you know, seven o'clock, I wanna call my mom and dad and tell them that I love them and allow them to reserve that space. Hey, look, this is the space where you can go to do your meditation, you know, your quiet time or whatever and reserve it. Like UCF, you have to be a Registered Student Organization, you register, and then they allow you to reserve a space to have meetings for your organization. So I think we just allow the access. I don't think that we mandate or dictate what they pray about or or necessarily when they pray. But allow them a space where they can express themselves in a way where they won't feel persecuted or attacked. And I think we do that by letting them know, hey, we're inclusive. Hey, here are these set of rooms. And if you choose to, you can go and meditate, you can go and pray, you can, you know, call mom or dad or do whatever tradition that you have, whether it's religious or just something that you and your family does um in this space and you just reserve it. And so that way, uh we're not excluding anybody and we're not uh, you know, mandating um any particular religion on any individual or or group of individuals. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Um and we are actually gonna be asking our last question. Uh and then after the last question, we're gonna move to uh closing statements. Uh where do you stand on the taxpayer dollars for discriminatory private schools through the voucher system? Uh Bruce, I'm gonna ask that question to you first.
Opposed to it. That was my answer. I'm opposed to allowing uh vouchers to go to school that discriminate on race, gender, age, what have you. But I'm opposed to to that.
Thank you. Uh Mike, same question.
I'm opposed to a public dollars belonging to public schools.
And Vicky?
Yes, thank you so much. I'm a product of the public school system and I'm I'm witness that it works. I'm opposed to vouchers, anything going to private school, public schools need it.
Perfect. Thank you. Um so at this time, we've come to the end. Um and this is going to be the closing statement portion of the forum. Uh so I'm gonna ask the, that's Mike to give his closing statement first, followed by Vicky and then Representative Anton.
I appreciate everyone who uh took time to uh hear what we had to say and um hope you'll make a choice and I hope it's me. Like I said, this is is a passion of mine. It's not anything that I sought out to do. I just kind of fell into it and and never not for any felt like work. It certainly has been hard, but it also has been rewarding, you know, being able to see who have been marginalized in one way or another uh overcome those obstacles. Uh first with me being a E S C student, um in my days in Orange County Public Schools and equally with my son and the challenges that he faced. And you know, not much has changed. Those kids who have any type of challenge, um the school board could serve them better. But in order to serve someone better, uh they have to understand what that need is. And I believe that I have the perspective and understanding to be able to bring um a different type of voice to the school board and and make it more reflective of the community that it serves. So you know, I certainly hope that you you guys will consider voting for me, but if you don't vote for me, I certainly just hope that you will vote because it is important to be involved in this process. Um I I think this is our last debate. So um you know, it's it's been a a fun and interesting campaign season. So um August eighteenth, uh please vote for me, Mike Scott. Our early voting is going on now. So it's the sixth, it's continuing to go on until uh the sixteenth of August from nine AM to seven PM. So thank you again for you guys' time, young Democrats and Rainbow Democrat. So thank you again for you guys' time, young Democrats and Rainbow Democrats. And if you have any questions as it relates to my candidacy, you're more than welcome to email, text or uh hit me up on my website. But definitely make sure that you vote, even if you don't vote for me, please, please vote for somebody. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And Vicky?
Yes. Again, let me thank you guys uh for this uh time of debate. Thank you so much. I just want to leave you all with this thought. I envision my role as a school board member as a liaison between schools, students in my community. It is and it will be my honest intention to represent my community's concern to the board while at the same time exhibit the board's mission and their desire to drive that to support the success of the students. In addition to my thirty-nine, now forty, going into my fortieth year of experience as an educator, it has allowed me to exercise with proficiency the skills of negotiation. And I'm happy and willing to do that. I am and will be visible to the members of my constituency. As an educator, I have operated successfully as a listener and a skillful communicator. I want students in District Five to be visionary. I want parents to understand, to speak destined to the lives of their children so that they can see success for their children. Remember, this is early voting, it started on Monday, goes to August sixteenth. August eighteenth is the last time you can vote. When you go to the polls, remember the two Vs. Vote Vicky. If you have any questions, you want to email me, please do so. Vote vickyd5@gmail.com. Thank you so much. My webpage, vickiefelderforschoolboard.com. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Vicky. And finally, Representative Bruce Anton.
So let me just first say, thank you all for conducting this forum, I appreciate it. Uh, give you a chance to, to get to know me better, to get to know my opponents better. So I will just say this, experience matters. And so I have twenty plus years of working with multi-billion dollar, working with folks of different guilt, party affiliations, different beliefs, what have you. I know what it takes to make policies. I've been endorsed by the Orange County Classroom Teachers Association and so they believe that I am the best person to, to represent District on the school board. I have working relationships with every person on the Orange County School Board already. Okay, so I can get the ground running. I know the superintendent, I know the administrators, I know the principals. Again, I have a proven track record of getting things done. I know how to get things done. I know how to bring folks together. I know how to seek input from the students, from the parents, from the administrators, from the principals, what have you, so that we can put together the best solution, the best answer, the best um policy that addresses everybody's concern. So if you want someone with experience, if you want somebody who knows how to get things done, if you want somebody who has years of experience working with the community and Orange County School Board, um, you got. So I hope that you all will support me. But again, thank you all for this opportunity, appreciate it. And have a good evening.
Thank you, Representative Anton. And uh that brings us to the end of this evening's forum. Um, I want to thank the Orange County Young Democrats for being a co-host of this evening's event. So thank each of the candidates for Orange County School Board this participating in this evening's forum. Of course, election day is, is um August eighteenth, early voting is going on now. If you have received your ballot by mail and haven't filled it out yet, be sure to fill it out and return it by mail uh as soon as possible. And I want to wish the candidates good luck and have a great evening.